Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bolden.
Present.
Trustee McFadden.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Present.
Trustee Brooks. Mayor Rudes.
Present, Madam Clerk.
Okay, note of the record, also present at this meeting is Village Manager, Ernestine Beck Fulcom. I can't see anybody else, so.
Attorney Joe Miller's here as well.
Okay. Is there anyone else here? Okay.
Okay, Dee, I'm gonna go ahead and read our disclaimer.
Okay.
And then we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
Okay.
Pursuant to Governor Pritzker's executive order 2020-07 COVID-19 Executive Order Number Five, which suspends the requirements of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, requiring in-person attendance by members of a public body during the duration of the gubernatorial disaster proclamation. The members of the village board will not be physically present for the designated board meeting, but will instead be participating in the meeting through audio access using a virtual meeting platform. Public comment may be submitted in advance of the meeting to Village Clerk, deejones@ university-park-il.com, or by text message to the village clerk at 708-473-6201. All comments must be received by 5:00 PM the day before the meeting. Thank you. Uh, let me see. All right, this is our pledge of allegiance. I don't see a flag, Madam Clerk. Trustee Brooks, you got a flag?
I can have one thirty-six.
I have it. I got it. I got it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Of your nation. And to the republic. For which is. One nation.
One nation.
All right, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir. I think I've got five.
Okay.
So I will read them in the order I received them. The first one is from Victoria Hollins. It was received December 21st at 7:18 PM by text message. And it reads, hello, Village Clerk. My name is Victoria Hollins, and I reside at 686 Madison Lane. I hope this text message finds you and your family well. I would like information as to why we are in need of an acting chief of police. I may have missed this information if previously shared. Also, I realize the meetings were not in person. Is there way for residents to watch LOL meetings by Zoom or the TV Channel Three? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may.
This is. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I did speak with Ms. Hollins to let her know that I did not have an answer to her first question, but also to, I gave her the information on how she could view the meeting on our YouTube Live. Okay, the second request, the second comment is from Gina Williams, received December 22nd at 10:49 AM. And it reads, good evening and happy holidays all. It is with much dismay I am writing this letter. I can't believe that we are even discussing the fate of our great Chief of Police Debbie Wilson, our very first black female police chief in University Park and Will County. Most of us have watched Chief Wilson climb the ranks through the years. She exudes excellence and class. It's really baffling that we are discussing her judgment for her simply doing her job. We all have watched this mayor bring in an incompetent company to run our golf course. No liquor license, no food or beverage. The greens looked unkept. And get this cash and carry on. Who does this in this day and age? Clearly, our tax dollars went down the drain. Nevertheless, getting back to Chief Wilson, who responded to a call a few months ago from two of our public workers who ran into a problem at the golf course. She responded correctly, but was met with pushback from the manager. Now moving forward to last Thursday, a second attempt to close out unfinished business from before. She makes a second attempt and is met with a real push and shove. The mayor, village manager, and two trustees, Louis and Bolden, show up. Why? My question is, why did the mayor and crew show up? In case they didn't know, it's called obstructing justice. The good news is there were cameras that recorded what happened. If they haven't destroyed the footage, they should clear up any misgivings. Now to the million-dollar question. Why was Debbie placed on administrative leave? Why are you bringing ex-chief of police, overqualified people within the department to take the position during the investigation? Why are you bringing back someone that was fired and is rumored to have a lawsuit against our village? This is the same chief of police who would sit there and do nothing when Mayor Covington all but begged him to regain order during the board meetings. This is the same man that former trustee Paula Wilson, who was just a resident at the time, attended a board meeting and advised us during public comments. Her sons watched several board meetings and couldn't understand why the mayor was treated so poorly by the chief of police. His response, and I quote, "Maybe they shouldn't be watching the board meetings." This was a golden opportunity to educate our youth instead of them being met with smug remarks. It is the same chief that former trustee Milton Payton would go, went toe-to-toe with on several occasions for his arrogance and rude behavior. All of this is on tape during 2013, 14, and 15. This is the same man that allowed former trustee Rudes to make photo ops in his office and then use them on his campaign material. A huge no-no. We all know Rudes never wanted to see Debbie sworn in as chief of police. Where are we getting money from to pay his salary? We will be paying two salaries until further notice. We recently learned the VM passed out our tax dollars and gave out bonuses and then lied about it. The same VM that was involved in a sexual harassment case alleged cover-up. I ask the trustees to not, to not do their diligence and not do a rush to judgment and give Chief Wilson the consideration and respect she surely deserves. Don't allow this to be a stain on a stellar career for our first black female chief of police. Respectfully, Gina Williams. The third one is from Deborah Taylor, received December 22nd at 1:49 PM. And it reads, public comment, please read. It has come to my attention that a special meeting was scheduled for this evening to discuss hiring another chief of police. First, I think it is important to give accolades where they are due. Chief Deborah Wilson's performance during this pandemic and before was stellar. She managed to do her job, which is enforcing the law with integrity under overwhelming circumstances, which includes a severe lack of resources and manpower. Many taxpaying residents have completely lost hope in the ability of this board and manager to make reasonable and rational decisions based on factual information. This meeting should have been open to the public due to the very nature. I don't understand how this board would approve a Christmas party at the golf club last Friday with no reservations. Yet this board claims to be concerned about opening up this meeting regarding public safety to taxpayers. This doesn't make any sense, does it? God and us. The fourth comment is from Mildred Morgan, received December 22nd at 3:16 PM. And it reads, you have got to know, first as human beings, then as trustees, our chief deserves her job, our chief, I'm sorry, does her job. Some in higher positions have failed us miserably. The VM allegedly lied and withheld information about our lawyers after, after, about our lawyers receiving pay to defend her for an alleged sexual harassment suit for about seven months, and you forgave her. Thousands and thousands of village taxpayer dollars were used, $3,500 to herself without your consent, and you forgave her. She lied to your face, budget meeting, on record about a donor, and you forgave her, just to name a few. Don't have time for more, too overwhelmed. We, the people of University Park, don't understand the actions of this mayor, but we can speculate. We do know our chief was an eyewitness to the inappropriate hands-on of the village manager to a female staff. We also know the chief was told not to mention it. But more importantly, we know how honest our chief is. Trustees, I ask that you don't allow this mayor to persuade, charm, or talk you into releasing one of the most important and honest staff in University Park, our first black female chief of police in University Park, Will County. Ms. Millie, 12/22/2021. As a wise man said, corruption needs help. The fifth one is from Vivian Covington, received December 22nd at 4:41 PM. And it reads, good evening, Kirk Jones. Happy holidays to you and the board of University Park. I have a few questions that I would like to address to the village manager. First one, while you were out on administrative leave, who was placed in your capacity as acting VM? Why aren't we doing the same for the police chief? Only the board can hire and fire the police and fire chief. When did this decision take place and at what meeting? Please provide the posting and minutes. There should have been the second ranking officer in command selected. Why didn't that happen? What HR guidelines are you following? How can someone be hired in a position without it being posted? Are you practicing pre-selection? Is this action placed in the current budget? What effect will it have on the budget? What is the ordinance number that was voted upon three years ago, previous administration for the hotel tax? After the discussion of the development with Mark Good and residents of building two hotels and restaurants and fast food chains and a family-style restaurant along with service station, truck stop. You state safety regarding COVID. How can you have events at the golf course and yet deny the taxpayers the right to attend the village board and special meetings? That ends the public comments. You're muted.
May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of litigation personnel discipline?
I'm off.
Second. Second, roll call.
Sorry, was that McFadden for first?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
And the second was?
Trustee Louis.
Okay. Trustee Louis.
Both I.
Trustee Franklin. Trustee Bolden.
Hi.
Trustee McFadden.
Both I.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale. Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Both I.
Mayor Rudes.
Both I, Madam Clerk.
Okay, sure, it is now 5:40. And. Okay. Did someone? Mayor, you go to breakout room?
Yes.
Okay, got you. I just want to be. Mayor Rudes.
Uh, votes I. Okay, are we good now with Tony Miller?
Yes, sir.
Item F, motion to ratify the appointment by the village manager of a temporary acting chief of police. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Louis. Is there a second? It's breaking. Hello?
Yeah, there, Mayor. We can hear you, I think.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? I thought I heard a second in there. Hello?
This is to make him temporary, right?
Yes.
So what you asking for?
For a second.
Oh, a second.
Okay. Second, second by Trustee Bolden.
Let me confirm, Trustee Bolden, were you seconding that motion?
I think so.
Okay, I just, well, I guess the question is either there was a motion to ratify the appointment by the village manager of a temporary acting chief of police that was made by Louis. I just want to make this call it, who's second?
Okay, and this is just for temporary, right?
Correct.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, do we have to do a roll call, Joe?
Roll call, yes, sir.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Louis.
Both I.
Trustee Franklin.
Both no.
Trustee Bolden.
Both I.
Trustee McFadden.
Both no.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale. Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Brooks.
Both no.
Mayor Rudes.
Both I.
Mr. Mayor.
All right. So in theory, I'll go ahead, Mayor, I apologize.
So in theory, she still gets to make the appointment, is that correct, a temporary?
Well, I mean, that's, we need to talk about, and we may need to, for her to make the, so the, we probably need to go back into closed session, I mean, unless you want me to, I mean, I can talk about some of the stuff what goes on as far as the person on paid leave. What we would need to do then is determine what the polit, what your policy says in regard to that for the acting chief when the, when the current chief is on a, on a, on a paid leave. So. And what's your policy, because then theoretically, that person would be the one that goes automatically by your village code. I was actually looking for that language earlier, and I didn't see, and it could be something that's different in your police procedures, but I didn't see it in your municipal code, but I may have been looking at the.
Ma, Madam Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, after the mayor had left and we had appointed, we had made change, the village manager, the administrative sergeant is supposed to report to the village manager at this point. So the village manager, according to the way we had the ordinance, technically, the village manager would be the person, like, would be, give the directives to the police department. The administrative sergeant is to handle it and hear out.
Well, that was my question, Theo, what happens now? How does that work?
Yes, ma'am, the, the, right now, the village manager technically, if you want to call it, she is the chief law enforcement officer right now of the village. She is to report to Sergeant, Sergeant Murphy, to report to her, and she is to give directives to that police department.
And who would that be?
Sergeant Murphy.
Now, I, I, I've got a question for attorney. According to the state statute, I thought that it was the sole right of the opportunity that she can get consent, but she has the ability to make that appointment.
Okay, so, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, so you're a village manager form of government, so the village, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, you're a village manager form of government, but, so she makes the appointments, and it's with the consent. The issue is, now that you guys are kind of not consented to making the appointment, you know, where do we go from here? And now, what I don't see, here's my issue, quite honestly, I'm looking at your, your code. And I don't see a process for, per se, that automatically, and I'm not saying that what Trustee Brooks is, is saying is incorrect. What I don't see is something that says automatically, say, you know, some of it, we says when the, the chief is out, a deputy chief becomes the acting chief. I don't see that in your code, which would be the next step, which, and absent that, then I do think that she's the one, she would be the one making that appointment, but the, you know, what the issue is that you guys essentially said, we're not giving her the authority to make that appointment. So, so that's where, that's where my issue is, and I'm, I'm looking at your code as we speak.
Yeah, that's what I don't understand, how does that work then?
See, what happened was is that we had a public.
I do have.
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
But, you know, we're gonna get back into executive session, because if we're talking about lawsuits, that person can't be the one. That's according to the past lawsuit.
No, he's not getting promoted. He's taken direct, he's not getting promoted. The statute, I, I was the one that settled the lawsuit. I, I, I was the one that settled the lawsuit. So, in that case.
Hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up. Yeah, we might have, we might have to go back into executive session here. We don't want to discuss all that in an open session.
Right, well, Ms. E is in charge. It's, it's according to the ordinance, she's in charge.
The ordinance at the state statute.
She's, we made the ordinance, listen, you, listen. Ms. E is in charge. We changed the ordinance based upon the fact that the police chief became the village manager. So what we did, we had to change it, and not only change it, but we brought it up because the, the ordinance was outdated. So, that administrative sergeant reports to the village manager on directives. He continues to move forward with the police department. He is not, however you want to call it, the, the, Ms. Beck Fulcom is technically like your chief according to the ordinance.
Okay, and I, and I got a question to attorney, yes, Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to know.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Who, when did we enter our code an administrative sergeant? I don't remember that. I know we, at one time, had commanders, we had deputy chiefs. Then, they, like, dissolved both of them. I'm not sure. I was not aware of an administrative sergeant.
Okay, well, Madam, uh, Madam, Madam Clerk, did we not, when we had that discussion, when the budget eliminated the deputy chief spot?
That was because they had commanders.
We, no, we, we eliminated, the eliminate, the, the commander spot was eliminated. Those, those were struck by the previous board. And so, because of the staffing at the police department, that was when, uh, this was before Trustee McFadden and Louis, the previous board, what we did is that had each police chief, and this is when her and the, the chief and the village manager came to the agreement. Somebody's gonna have to mute. I, I, I hear what the mayor is saying. It sound like someone, like, static. But that was when the village manager and the chief, now, if they didn't bring it, put it on paper, but that was the understanding that was described at that board meeting, and that was the agreement, especially based upon what the mayor was talking about, that we can't really speak openly, but we had an administrative sergeant, because that was the current ranking, and we went according to how surrounding departments were going right now without the deputy chief, especially based upon the structure and the manpower, because right now, we are below manpower.
So, all right, good. So, attorney Miller?
Yes, sir, sorry.
Our ordinance cannot override the state statute, can it?
Generally, no, but, I mean, here's the issue that's a little bit, that's a little kind of wacky here, is that, I generally like, even for my village manager clients, that they, that the, those decisions of police chief get ratified by the board. Here, even though it's a temporary person, so theoretically, yes, she would make the appointment, but you guys, and I, and this is why I think we may need to go into closed session, because I, I have a question if it's, if the issue is the general idea of the temporary appointment or the idea of who may be the temporary appointee. And I, so that may be the issue as well, so I'm, so I don't, I, I think we need to go back into closed session to, to hammer out that part of it. Yes, sir.
Whoa, 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 wait a minute. To me, it sound like now we. To me, it sound like now we questioning the vote of the trustee. The vote has been made.
Oh, I'm not.
No, no, no.
I'm, no, I'm not.
Because...
And I guess, you know, you're, you're right. I guess, I am to an extent. I am to an extent. You're right. You're right. I, I, so...
Listen, listen. I was here. I'm the only trustee who was here. I'm telling you, you keep trying to go around, not you, Mr. Miller. Stop trying to go around. We don't, first of all, we have an administrative sergeant.
There's no administrative sergeant. I police...
It is administrative sergeant, Mayor. Why are we playing this game? We have an administrative sergeant. He been doing his job. He does the payroll. He does all these other things. He answers to the chief. The chief answers to the manager. What is so hard about a, 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 a tree? It's a tree.
There's nothing hard about it, but we got to have a leaf, a, a branch on the tree for it to have substantial. Is there an administrative sergeant in, in, in our, in our department currently? Under title?
Yes. Yes, and you know who he is. Why, why are we playing, why are we playing? This is nothing. This is over. He answers to Mrs. E according to the ordinance. Period.
Okay, because I, I was very concerned about, uh, about this issue. And I'm concerned about the, um, the state statute and our home ruleability, but I know that even at home, where we can't supersede what state, Madam Clerk?
Yeah.
I just had a question for trustee Brooks. The administrative sergeant is, is this person still under the union? Because when I was looking at the contract, I did not see that. Right, that's why I'm asking. I didn't read.
So, I, I guess, I guess this is, I guess this is work on Theo time, right?
No, you're the one. I'm sorry, I'm asking.
Because, because, I'm telling you what the board did. Why are we trying to go around and what are, what are we trying to do? This is, are we trying to, we, 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 we trying to rethink somebody?
Mr. Brooks, may I?
Yeah, rethink.
Based on the rank that you say it, I simply ask a question. Is that person a member of the bargaining unit? Uh, shall I say not that person?
What, what?
That position. I'm asking a question.
Ki- well, can I answer this? He would be no different than somebody else that sits in, in, in a union position and act as a manager. Oh. Can we please move on?
I like, I like to make the motion go into, like, five-minute executive session.
We need to go back.
Yeah, we need, we need to go back into an executive session.
I'm like, I guess. This crazy.
Can I have a motion to go adjourn to executive session for five minutes?
I'm motion.
There's a motion. Is there, is there a second?
Hold on.
You're muted, trustee Shirley. And, and the sergeant is not in the, in the ranking structure.
So how, how fast it took you to figure that one out? You, you, you been in there for two years.
I just had to do my reading.
No.
You been in there for two years.
It's time to go. It's a day before Christmas.
Yes.
And, and everybody has stuff, things they have to take care of.
Well, this is important.
They already got their stuff taken care of. We need to go back into it. We need to go back in. We need to go back in for five minutes.
For five minutes.
Just so I can get some clarification too.
Madam Clerk?
Please, so I can clarify on this.
Was there a motion to move into executive?
Yes, it was. I motioned it.
Yes.
And it's second.
Second.
Yes.
Who's the second?
Shirley Bowden is the second.
Yes, she's the second.
Uh, do we have to go roll calls, Joe? Attorney Miller?
Uh, yes, please. Yes, please.
Roll, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Both I.
Trustee Franklin.
Both I.
Trustee Bowden.
Both I.
Trustee McFadden.
Both I.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Both I.
Mayor Rudis.
Both I.
And this is for purposes of...
Personnel.
The, yeah, the appointment, employment, uh, specific employees of the city of, of the village of University Park.
Got you.
Good evening, Mayor, for the, for, uh, for clarity.
Seven, it is 7:04.
Hello. For clarity, Ms., um, Mayor Rudis, I just want to make sure, is Ed Bradley going to the executive session?
No, no.
No.
Will Ed Bradley be joining you all back on screen when you return?
No, no.
Thank you. You ready to go?
Mm-hmm. Uh, attorney, all right, oh, okay. Attorney Miller?
I'll be in there. I'll be in there. I'm joining in right now, Mayor.
All right.
Air has to take over the board.
I thought I heard you say it.
No, you ain't heard me say nothing, man. Go with that nonsense. Madam Clerk, it, it, may I have a motion?
Stop, 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 stop.
Stop, let's go. Come on, guys. Let's go. Let's just end the meeting.
Is, is there a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
Wait, wait, no.
We're all, we're live.
No.
Let's return to open session.
There is a motion to go back into open session. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
A motion, second.
Moved by Brooks, checked the second by Bowden. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Uh, both I.
Trustee Franklin.
Both I.
Trustee Bowden.
Both I.
Trustee McFadden.
Both I.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Both I.
Mayor Rudis.
Uh, votes I. Is there a motion?
It's 8:30 PM that we, okay.
Now, is there a motion for adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
Who made the original motion? Brooks?
Lewis.
Lewis did.
Second by Bowden.
Yeah.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Lewis.
Both I.
Trustee Franklin.
Both I.
Trustee Bowden.
Both I.
Trustee McFadden.
Both I.
Trustee Jenkins-Bale.
Both I.
Trustee Brooks.
Both I.
Mayor Rudis.
I concur. Mayor, both I, both I did.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Please stay, please stay safe and happy.
Attorney Miller, you need to have that conversation with the manager.
Take care, take care.
Yep, I will. I'll talk to, um...
Love and harmony during the holiday season. Let's all keep Christ in Christmas. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.